Policy committee meeting and a committee of the whole meeting, uh, go call please.
Mister Ford?
Present.
Mister Nicholson?
Present.
Mister Satterwhite?
Present.
Now, do you want me to do the observing as well?
Sure, yeah.
Sure, okay, um. Superintendent Tutwiler?
Present.
Business Manager McQ?
He's he's.
Present.
Mister McQ?
Present.
Okay, uh, Miss Jules?
Present.
And Attorney Miles?
Present.
I think you're supposed to do the rest of the committee members too. Even if they're not here.
Okay.
Okay.
Present.
Oh, okay, Miss Capola? I think that's a no, Mrs. Gately? Nope, and Mayor McGee?
They were absent.
Great, um, uh, did we get Attorney Gallo as well?
Uh, did not, Attorney Gallo?
Present.
Thank you.
Great, I think that is everybody. Great. Alright, great, thank you, um, so we only have one item on the agenda, which is the policy manual, so we are picking up where we left off, um, we were, I think, in the middle of C, and so I think we're gonna do C and D tonight. Attorney Gallo had also requested that we, um, revisit, go back to the discipline code, which we talked about this, uh, fall, uh, in order to give enough time to, um, uh, set up, set up, set things up for next year. Uh, I know that the last, last we discussed, if you recall, we had given it an initial review and then the, uh, administration was leading a, an, uh, an effort to get some student feedback and input. Uh, really community impact and people, uh, in- input and feedback, um. And so I think, uh, Attorney Gallo can share on that. Other pending item there is the, the dress code and electronic device policy, which as we raise is, we know is a, is a real issue, uh, a real, uh, focus area for, for improvement and one that, uh, as I understand is, is, is gonna be continued to be gathering in the feedback stage and, 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 uh, so we should expect that to be, to be coming back to us, um, as that happens, uh. But I will, I will turn it over to, uh, uh, Attorney Gallo, if tha- if that's okay with you, Ms. Presser, we'll start with Attorney Gallo's piece and then go back to C. Okay, terrific, alright, thank you. Any cr- any questions, uh, from the members first of all about the process or where we are? Um, I will, we'll, at the end, we can schedule our next meeting, we've been doing this about, um, once a month and trying to make sure that we have enough reviewed ahead of time to continue to make uh, progress as we ru- run through the chapters, um, so I'll turn it over to you, Attorney Gallo.
Thank you, uh, Chairman Nicholson, so, um, thank you for, for having me tonight. Um, just a brief, brief recap, um, I was here in October and November of last year. The reason for that is that I had flagged some concerns along with senior administration in the discipline code at that time. The discipline code appears both in the district handbook that is published annually and the larger policy manual. This is how I began having the pleasure of working with Do- with, uh, Ms. Presser and, um, Miss Jules, um, and another area of policy that direct, that intersects both in the manual and the annual handbook is the dress code. Um, so in October, November, I presented some changes to you, uh, on the discipline code and if I'm allowed to do a screen share, I'll put those up, um. Mary Jules had circulated these by email most re- recently on two twenty-four. So if you have your email from, um, September twenty-fourth, it would be there, but let me see if I also just put them up on the screen. And I have done so, um. The things that occurred in October and November is that we drafted a preface to the discipline code that includes, um, some alignment to, to the core values that you've developed along with senior administration. There were also, um, revisions to the discipline code in terms of reference to, you can see here, mass general laws provisions. This is the norm in other districts, not in the existing Lynn Discipline Code, but in other districts, we see each uh, area of infraction paired with the applicable provision in law. The reason that that's important is because depending what law you're operating under, if you're operating under section thirty-seven H, which deals with weapons and assaults on teachers, there's a ten-day appeal right if the student is suspended. If you're talking about thirty-seven H and a half infractions, those are felony infractions, there's a five-day appeal right. If you're talking about thirty-seven H and three-quarters, there's also a five-day appeal right. Um, the existing discipline code doesn't have those statutory references, what happens is that principals have to play lawyer. I was getting a number of calls, um, with principals sort of confused about which statute applied in a given situation. And I saw at least one instance, unfortunately, where there was a mismatch in law and a student was suspended and given um, bad info, a five-day appeal right when he was really due a ten-day appeal right. And I wanna avoid that kinda thing from happening, um, to protect the students' rights and, and to protect our compliance. Um, by the way, please interrupt me if you have any questions, but the other reasons for revision were not substantive in nature for the most part, they had to do with grammatical and organizational changes. And they also had to do with, um, aligning our discipline code to the policy manual. Just showing you a reference here, um, so that, that, you know, those documents talk to each other. And again, Miss Jules and Ms. Presser, um, were just so helpful in making all that happen. Two substantive revisions exist. One is, is, uh, paragraph eleven point four. And I've included in there a prohibition that you can see on vaping. The existing policy doesn't prohibit vaping and there's confusion among principals as to whether they can discipline a student who vapes, um, based on the current prohibitions on cigarette smoking. And so that's something that should be updated for the times. The other substantive revision is paragraph six point nine. Six point eight, I apologize, and, and the issue here is that the existing discipline code really only allows discipline, um, if it gets to the point of assault or battery on a teacher. A- and so there was some real concern on the part, and I know we have Sheila O'Neill with us tonight observing, um, some real concern on the part of, of the union in terms of, um, less than sort of assault and battery type harm, so an example would be a child who throws a chair or desk across the room, a child who, a student who shoulder checks, um, a staff member. Those are things that might not res- rise to the, the sort of assault and battery threshold, and so how do we discipline? There. Um, those are really all of the changes, you've already seen these in October and November. A- and then following that, like Attorney Nicholson said, uh, we solicited feedback. So the way we did that is from December through February, we put out a poll. Um, it was put out in Spanish and English, it was a bilingual poll, and we asked students faculty members and, um, parents all at the high school level to consider fairness, to consider equity, to consider sensitivity towards race, culture, sex, gender identity, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, um, homelessness and the like. Uh, about five hundred people responded, most of them were high school students, well over three hundred. About a hundred fifty staff responded and about seventy parents responded. As to the discipline code, most respondents indicated that they believe the discipline code was fair, was equitable, and was not insensitive. There was an open-ended question where respondents were allowed to provide their suggestions for the discipline code and very few were provided. And based on that feedback, after discussion with senior administration, um, the existing revisions, which were minimal in terms of substantive nature, more about organization, grammar and the like, um, my hope is, is here that the, the subcommittee will consider, um, will consider, you know, rec- will consider them and, and if appropriate, recommend them for adoption to the full committee, and I see Attorney Satterwhite's hand up.
Yes, thank you, Attorney Gallo, Attorney Satterwhite.
Thank you, um, so, yeah, I'm reading six point three, um, six point five and six point six, and tha- that looks like that's you, what you're trying to tie together in six point eight, bu- but my issue with six point eight is that it's very broad. So, you know, I think that any physical or mental abuse, uh, against a, a school department employee or other staff or pupil is, is, is never, uh, something that I would tolerate. But I just feel as though that, that's such a broad, um, uh, point there and, um, i- is it gonna be based off of a reasonable person's standard? You know, some people might take things, uh, uh, you know, to heart that someone else might not, um, but what are we, what are we basing that on, how the person feels?
Yeah, so I, it's a great question, why I expected it to come up, it would come up tonight, a- and so, um, I'll just show you, do you see this screen share here, that this is a comparison to other districts? And I wanna show you, so, so we're not the only district struggling with this issue. Um, there is more and more case law that's holding, um, that sort of assault and battery standard um, higher and higher, and so districts are trying to find another way to discipline, and so we looked at a number of them. I'm putting the, them on the screen for you, some of the, some of them that I looked at. One was in Hingham, and they just had this inappropriate physical conduct. Don't look, to be honest with you, what's inappropriate? I don't know.
It's broad too, yeah.
Physical conduct, that's not the only way you can do harm, what about the kid who throws a chair across the room? But, you know, you see what they're getting at and struggling with. Look at Lowell, any action which tends to endanger the health and safety of the offender, that is pretty broad there. Um, other student staff or impedes on the teaching or learning process or disrupts the orderly operation of the school, quite broad. Then I look at Boston, endangering the physical safety or mental emotional health of another. So far, I'm liking that, but then we get into some pretty loquacious language that I think confuses it a little bit potentially. So I, I think if you ask Attorney My Host, my guess would be, he would say that it's, you know, purview of the school committee. Attorney My Host is to what they want to do, but the proposed Lynn provision, we, we tried to strive here for a, a middle ground, um, but, you know, certainly up for, for revision if we want to further revision.
Attorney My Host, um, ca- can we put, like, using some sort of reasonable person's standard, like, you know, th- there's, the, i- i- I just don't want it to be interpreted um, or used and, and abused, um, to, uh, you know, to get a point across. Uh, obviously, um, again, I think that, um, any mental or physical abuse against any staff member is, is unacceptable. Um, but I think that it's, it's, it's overly broad where it says endanger in in any way the physical safety or mental emotional health of the school department employee or staff or pupil.
Attorney Satterwhite, I agree with you completely. I was just muted, so I didn't try to respond, I couldn't respond. When Attorney Gallo brought this over to my office, discussed with me, it's too broad as far as I'm concerned. I have really don't, it can be interpreted in so many different ways. I'm, I'm not happy with the language. So I think that, I agree with you, I agree with, uh, Attorney Gallo, I think that has to be revised.
Um, s- and do you, can you go back to the discipline page, uh, Att- Attorney Gallo? Just to, to look at the other ones that I thought would fall in, like the verbal threat to persons or property? That's, that's pretty, you know, tha- tha- that sounds like it falls within there. Um, y- you know, now we know, well, what, what can, uh, be the thing that impacts the mental emotional health of the school department or employee? Well, swearing or using vulgar language, um, I think is the, the definition enough. And we know what a swear is, we know what a vulgar, vulgar language or, or threat is. Um, and then, um, uh, inappropriate physical contact, I, I know that you're saying, um, you know, throwing a, a desk across, um, uh, uh, a, a classroom is not technically a physical, uh, contact, but maybe we can uh, add something like that in six point three where, you know, self battery or any un- uh, other unwanted or, uh, inappropriate physical contact, um, or, um, I don't know, uh, um, physical contact or, uh, action, um, that, um, uh, you know, uh, can impact, um, the pupils, teachers and, and other staff or something like that.
So one thing that's a little bit confusing is that, um, thirty-seven H covers assault or assault and battery on a school staff. Thirty-seven H and three-quarters would cover those actions on a pupil and any lesser actions on a school staff. So I, so I would suggest that while the language could change, we probably do need to parse out those two issues in separate provisions, and, and so maybe as a solution here, instead of endangering in any way the physical safety or mental emotional health of a school department employee or other educational staff or pupil, we say endangering in any way the physical safety. Um, and I don't know, again, how the committee would, would feel about that, but, but, you know, are you putting someone in danger? Um, you know, that might not rise to assault or battery, but if we have it here, we are providing some protection. Um, mental emotional health, I agree with you, Attorney Saturday, uh, Attorney Satterwhite is much more difficult to, to ascertain.
So, um, maybe, um, endangering the physical s- uh, safety, um, uh, uh, or space, uh, or mental emotional, um, health, I, I guess, um, 'cause the, the, what, I think what makes it so broad is in any way.
Okay.
And, and, and maybe, uh, to, to satisfy the issue with the, um, you know, someone can come up to you and, and be in your personal space and, and you can take that as a threat, so, you know, uh, and they do so in an intimidating way, I see it all the time, so, I, 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 I think that that should definitely be addressed, but maybe, uh, Attorney, um, Nicholson, do you understand my concern? Do, do you?
Yeah, yeah, definitely, thank you, um, Attorney Satterwhite, I mean, I, 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 I think I have raised, uh, something about this in, in the fall, um, I so, so, f- first of all, one, a general comment, I think this issue comes up in, in, in a number of different ways reading the policy because it, it, it's, it's, uh, there's a lot of things that are prohibited, each of them say they are punishable by, you know, parent conference suspension up to notifying local law enforcement, and we're, we're, you know, uh, not failure to return official school documents requiring a signature, I think we all would agree is not gonna result in a suspension, right? Um, and so the, 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 the fairness and equity of this application will come in its application. Um, and I think that's, that's, that's part of why we asked for the preface in the beginning. And I thought, I think it was a very well, uh, articulated, uh, summation of the philosophy and goal of the document, um. I'm, you know, I, I'm still happy to continue to speak the language, I mean, I think we're, we're getting into parsing the words, and I think we're, you know, I've given our, all our legal background, and that is surprising, not surprising, but you know, an assault, if you're, if you're in, uh, uh, reasonable apprehension of immediate harm, that, that, that can be installed too, even if you don't actually, um, make contact.
That's what I was thinking, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Um, but, you know, the, the other point that Attorney Gallo just made is that maybe he would want to separate out the employee versus pupil anyway, um, 'cause right now it looks like pupil is under the H section, um, in that last one, six point eight, so maybe we could ask, um, Attorney Gallo to, to revisit that one with Attorney My House, to make sure that there's no. What's that?
I agree with that totally, I think that should be done.
Okay.
Attorney Gallo and myself work on it, we'll come back with you.
Great.
Okay. I- and, e- and I think that if I could, um, Attorney Nicholson, if, if there are any other questions, that would be great to, to sort of have, because the, the other sort of issue that exists here is that the handbook will be published, um, during the summer for next year, um, and I do need to get that out to bid at the start of the summer because there are procurement laws and the like. Um, so, you know, having this kinda wrapped up by, by late spring, by the end of this school year would be, you know, helpful to those ends.
Definitely, definitely, yeah, I know, I know the feedback we've gotten so far from the committee and the, the feedback I've gotten too, and it sounds like, um, my understanding is the feedback that you got as well and the process that you ran, uh, was largely around the, um, dress code and the, uh, electronic device policy, so I think we should certainly build in plenty of time for us to review that and discuss that, um, as you get ready to print. But, um, yeah, just, did, I'll, I'll, I'll put it to the other members, remember Ford, um, and Castellanos and Attorney Satterwhite, if anybody has any other comments they'd like to share about this part of the manual, uh, given, given that timeline.
Nope.
Okay.
A- and I, I do have just some FYIs on the dress code, if you'd like me to share those, uh, Attorney Nicholson as well.
Yeah, please.
Thank you, so the survey feedback on the dress code was a little bit different. There, there was a sizable minority, about a forty-five percent of the respondents who, who said that they felt that portions of the dress code were unfair, inequitable or ins- sensitive as we consider race, culture, sex, gender identity, um, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, so a ma- a minority of respondents, but a sizable minority, forty-five percent. Um, there were over one hundred comments that were submitted, um, regarding the dress code. Most of them, um, were, were in a few different areas, and I'll just touch on those briefly. One was that the current dress code singles out, um, some traditional, traditionally female items of attire. There are express bans on halter tops, tube tops, other traditionally female items of attire, and you don't see that with regard to traditionally male items of attire, um. Another was that the current dress code single, singles out some traditionally black male items. There are specific prohibitions on, and the terms used are durags and wave caps. We don't see that with regard to other races. Um, a- and the thinking is that we should be more neutral in those ways, rather than singling out traditionally female items. We should say, you know, your top must cover your shoulders, your back, your midriff, if that's what we're going for. Rather than single out, you know, durags and wave caps, we should say, you know, no headgear, no head coverings, and by the way, on that piece, we, we do not have, unfortunately, exceptions for religious-based head coverings, nor medical-based head coverings, and I would urge you that those should be inserted as well. Um, there were also some concerns in that there are currently prohibitions around hygiene, there are requirements for cleanliness, um, and requirements around hairstyles and, and that that doesn't consider socioeconomic circumstances. Um, that's the feedback that we got, and there are a couple of other problems too. Um, there's something called the student appearance policy in the handbook. There's something under your manual, under J I C A, that's called the dress code. Those are not identical documents, they are quite similar, but they're not identical, they probably should be identical and, and should be identically named. Um, there's also not a separate electronic device policy. The electronic device policy currently lives within the dress code for some strange reason. And I would say that that should be separated out as its own policy. So at this point, I've done some drafting to deal with that feedback and those issues. Um, Dorothy and senior administration are, have sort of reviewed those, that draft. A- and the next step is that we wanna get some feedback from the principals who will actually be then having to implement this. And so I, I don't have it for you tonight, um, because the survey feedback just ended, you know, in February. But what I'd like to come, do is, is ask Chairman Nicholson if I may come back in April with that and with the tweak to the discipline code language.
Yeah, I think, I think that sounds like a great plan, um, I know that there, that, that, that's consistent with feedback that, that we have gotten, um, on the committee about those issues. I definitely, I would also ask if you can, and e- exactly as you did for this one, um, compare uh, to, to, to some other districts for best practices on this, uh, 'cause it's an important issue. And, uh, that would be in- enlightening, and, you know, if it's possible, I think it was great to get the feedback on the exactly, uh, on the status quo, if, if, if there are particularly student, uh, you know, it's good to, and then I'm glad we got the administration, the principals, and there's a way to get some student feedback on the proposed draft as well. Maybe some student leaders, I know that, that's, um, you know, we, we, we've been setting up that process to engage student leaders and providing feedback, uh, which we heard about last, at our last meeting, so maybe that's an opportunity to, to, um, ask, ask.
Like the inclusion bugs?
Right, right, exactly.
Yeah, yeah, good.
Um, any other, any other thoughts on that from my colleagues?
Thank you, um, I, I, you know, I was a student here, uh, so, you know, what you're talking about, I, I think goes back some time. Uh, but so, so are all of our policies, so, you know, I think that it goes hand in hand, that it all needs to be updated and, um, uh, you know, we spent a, a, a large amount of time at our last meeting talking about voices. And, um, I like that you're, um, you're allowing those, uh, voices to be heard, so I appreciate that, Attorney Gallo.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Attorney Gallo.
Thank you.
The dress code policy might be the most sensitive of all.
Yeah. Yeah, definitely. Alright, well, thank you for, for, um, leading that process and for the, the, the thought that's going into that. We will look forward to that, that update, um, when we, when you return. And feel free, um, to remain for C and D, but I think that was the, the extent of your specific presentation, right?
A- and thank you for letting me cut in line, and, uh, Ms. Presser especially, thank you for, for that as well.
Great, thank you, Attorney Gallo. Alright, I will turn it over to, uh, Ms. Presser.
Okay, just give me one moment, and to start my screen share here. Okay, so we left off, um, we actually finished section B at the end of our last session. So now we're ready to start with section C, which, uh, Mister Ford will be happy to hear is a relatively short section. Um, for us to get through that. Uh, so I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna start at the beginning, I'm not as adept, if you remember, I'm not quite as adept in the the scroll, uh, the screen share as Attorney Gallo, but, uh, we'll, we will muddle through. Um, so we start out with C, uh, section C A or policy C A. There are two versions, um, where am I gonna get my, my scrolling? That, oops, this is, see, this is what happens when I share. Um, uh, we'll start out with, uh, C A. There are two versions, there's the, um, Lynn version and the M A S C version. The Lynn version looks to me more like a list, uh, sort of, just a list of responsibilities as opposed to actually a policy. My concern was that while it listed responsibilities, it didn't say, you know, that there could be additional, so this, additional responsibilities, so this looked like it was supposed to be a definitive list. Um, and one of the things that I like about the M A S C version of the policy is it specifically gives the superintendent permission to form staff councils and administrative councils to be able to run the district. Every once in a while, we do get school committees that question, um, who has the authority to do that? So I think it's always nice that the policy actually explicitly gives the, the superintendent permission to do that. So I would recommend adopting the M A S C policy on this one.
Thank you, does anybody, does anybody have thoughts on that, any of my colleagues wanna weigh in on that? Yeah, Attorney Satterwhite.
Um, I, I, I just wonder why it was drafted the way that it was, was drafted to begin with, um. You know, w- when, when I think of these policies, um, I, on, in all, in all honesty, I, I compare it to um, uh, you know, the government. So, you know, obviously, Congress makes the law, but sometimes they'll give certain powers to the executive branch uh, that typically falls within their purview, and then, you know, there's a balancing act where, you know, they wanna take things back and it just adds the plethora of, of, of issues, so, I, I, I don't know, I don't have the history as to. So I, I, I don't know, I don't have the history as to, to why it was written that way. Attorney Miles, do you have, have any feedback on that?
I'm trying to ascertain what Dorothy is referring to the language in.
Uh, file C A.
On C A, that the, um.
I'm looking at it right now, but typically in that.
So I'm looking at the, the LIN version of C A is a list of. Yeah.
I see that.
Oh, so you're looking. So in, in the, in the M A S C version of C A, in the first paragraph, um, it says, um.
If you intend on the school committee, that the district employee.
Yeah.
Personnel.
Yeah.
Officially, it's required, so it's organized, et cetera. So where, where are we going with that?
So what I'm suggesting is that this is a more general sort of, um, general policy and less, rather than a list of responsibilities, um, that gives the, the superintendent the ability to carry out those responsibilities, um, and to organize his administration, um, obviously within budget parameters and so forth, um, the way the superintendent sees fit to organize his administration. And, and you know, the school committee would still maintain, um, authority over job descriptions. Um, it wouldn't give away that, but in terms of like putting together different groups of people to get job, you know, to get work done, um, it leaves that in the hands of the, uh, of the administration.
The more, the more I read, uh, Attorney Nicholson and, uh, uh, Mr. Ford, I feel as though the majority of these responsibilities that fall underneath the, uh, school committee, we designate to the superintendent already. You know, he's the one that drafted the, uh, district wide, um, uh. I guess framework, um, and, and it says that that's one of the things that we do, creating the structure. This is something that he's done. This is what we created him on. So I, I don't know what the history is with regards to this. If, 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 you know, I, I would, uh, I would, you know, s- s- take a step back and hear more from, uh, Mr. Ford and Ms. Nicholson if they have any questions on, on this. I, I just want to know more about the history, that, that's why. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think it's, um, I, I don't have strong feelings about it, but it seems to me like a difficult task to try to write out specifically everything that the administration does. And for that reason, it seems like the, the M A S C has that to, uh, has that going for it, that it's, that it's more of a, um, broader statement of the goal. Mr. Ford, do you have thoughts?
Well, I'm sorry, I was, I was renewed. I, I, I agree with the, uh, the M A S C administrative goals.
Okay, great. Is that okay with you, Attorney Satterway?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. And then moving on then to. Sorry. Moving on then to, um, C A dash E, um, which again, um, usually we say, you know, the exhibits might not be necessary to put into the manual. And I actually think that some of the items in this list are really should be under the purview of the school committee rather than the administration. For instance, establishing the mission of this, the missions of the schools. To me, mission is, uh, under the purview of this, of the, um, school committee. Establishing goals and objectives and so forth should be under the purview of the school committee. Not that you don't do that without, um, working with the superintendent and taking the superintendent's advice, but the ultimate decision, I think, belongs in the hand of the school committee. So I would actually say that, um, you could delete this without, um, making any changes. And some of it looked a little bit dated to me when I looked at the, the top paragraph, um, partly because it says the Board of Education rather than the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. And I don't know what the Massachusetts Goals for Education, I've never heard of that document. I don't know what it refers to.
That makes sense to me. That's fine with me. Other, other thoughts on that to, to delete that?
Would.
Okay. Attorney Satterway, here.
Um, I, I agree, you know, uh, uh, this is everything that we do. You know, we, we have purview over the curriculum, we have purview over, um, you know, a- all of these things. So I agree with, uh, with Ms., uh, with Dr. Yusine.
Great, thank you.
And, you know, not to say that there's not an important role that administration doesn't play in these, but, um, but I think it, this, I think might give, might be interpreted to give some authority where, um, you might want to keep it for yourselves.
Great.
Okay, I did it again. By the time we get to L, I will have mastered this, except maybe by then we'll be back in person, so I won't have to worry about it. Okay, so again, on the school superintendent, to me, this looks like the job description, um, which generally does not reside in policy, but, um, you, uh, obviously the job description is the purview of the school committee. Um, but I think the M A S C version of this is, again, broader in nature and more, um, more in the realm of policy rather than being the specific job description.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
I agree.
Okay, great.
Okay. Did I go too far here? Okay, didn't go too far. So that brings us to C B A dash E and C B C dash E, which again, looks like an extension of the job description and I would, um, recommend that that be deleted from the policy manual.
Agreed.
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 Okay. Trying to go slowly enough so that I don't go zooming and bouncing around here. Okay, so on C B B, um, this looked to me like procedure rather than policy. So I, again, I would recommend that this could be deleted from the manual.
Yeah, I, that makes sense to me.
I, I'd rather it be in the, uh, purview of, uh, the current committee as to how they want to, um, move forward with recruiting when it is superintendent at that point.
Yeah.
Yeah. So then, um, on C B D, which is the superintendent's contract, um, the two policies actually, they differ a little bit in their wording, but they say essentially the same thing. Um, the difference, the difference, the one thing that's different in the M A S C policy is the explicit statement about negotiating a successor contract.
I like that.
Okay.
So the M A S C version?
Yeah.
Okay, um, for the next policy then, which is the evaluation of the superintendent. I, again, I'm going to say that, um, I think the M A S C version is a better fit uh, because it is a relatively new policy that, um, reflects the new model for superintendent evaluation.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So, uh, sorry.
Yeah, Madam Castor.
So how does this match up with our current evaluation? I know we just went through the process and, uh, how does that match up?
How does the policy match up?
Yeah, with what we just went through in terms of what we, our evaluation process, the tool that we used recently, did you?
Exact, it, it matches up exactly because this policy was written after that new model and tool came into effect.
Okay.
Which one, the M A S C or the LIN version is what you're asking?
Well, I, I mean, you're, uh, the M A S C version of the policy.
Brian, were you asking about the LIN version?
Yeah, the LIN version, that's what I just wanted to say. So I know we, we were clearly, we prefer to update, but I just wanted to just say how, if that was even, um, if, if.
Let me go back to the LIN version.
Yeah, I think what he was asking is to see if we a- actually did follow the policy of the evaluation.
Yes, yes, exactly. So.
I don't think this, you know, it's talking about limited number of incidents.
I think, I, I think in, I mean, I think in general, you probably followed it. It's not specific enough that, you know, that you stepped, that you ended up not sort of violating your own policy by the way you did the evaluation. Uh, but I just think that the M A S C version, which focuses more on the, you know, the idea of, of setting goals and evaluating on the goals, um, and, um, and the standards is just more up to date with the way you are doing it now.
In the way we're required by law to do it.
Yes, yes.
Correct. Okay, that, that's the biggest thing, Brian. I think that's, that's why it's important because we're required by law to do that. I'm fine with, uh, taking the M A S C, uh, Attorney Nicholson.
Great, same here.
Good.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay. And that means pretty simply that the evaluation form is probably no longer a valid, uh, document to have in the manual because this relates to the, you know, the, uh, the policy that you just decided to, uh, change.
Yep, agreed.
I think that it's important to, again, uh, to, to keep this in the purview of the committee that's, that's doing it. I don't want to force them to do certain or use certain, um, goals.
Well, yes, that's a good, yeah, the goals are going to change over time and it should, it should.
Did you guys read the, uh, the personal qualities list?
Do you want me to go back up so I can?
No, I don't have to do it. One room is suitably attired and well groomed.
Uh-oh, Dr. Tuttwiler.
Is the dress code okay for the superintendent?
I think he passes that with flying colors.
Thank you, Jared. Someone said, uh-oh, I, you know, I heard that. The facial hair and the sweater. Bears are in.
So, um, the next one is C B J, the, um, termination of employment. To me, this is something that belongs in the contract, not in policy.
I agree, right, and we do have that in the contract.
Yeah. So I would say to delete that.
Attorney Myhos.
Yeah, a question.
Because this conflicts with the contract, which one, um, would, would be applicable?
Contract would take precedence, obviously. The bottom line is, the policy can be changed at any time. So I mean, this policy, any policy that you have within the framework of these, you're adopting, school committee has the authority to change it, if they give proper notice, et cetera. I mean, you're not binding to any great extent, whereas the contract for employment is binding between the school committee and the superintendent.
And I, I think, uh, Attorney, Attorney Myhos, you can correct me, but I think if it ever came to, if it ever came to a, a, um, if our judge were ever looking at this, they would say that the last document had precedence over anything that came before as well, I believe.
Yeah. In the framework of the policy, but the bottom line is the agreement that is interlaced between the school committee and the superintendent, that's binding. The judge will look at that with the meaning of the minds were.
Yeah, yeah. So then, um, the next one, C B J dash R. I'm not, I guess I would, I mean, pretty simply say, I don't think this belongs in the policy manual. It seems to be quotes from someplace, but it's not quotes from the law that's referenced at the bottom. Um, and I, I, again, I, I would think that the contract would cover all these items and it doesn't really belong in the manual.
It's talking about the city of Boston, do you see that? It says, no superintendent other than the union superintendent and superintendent of the schools in the city of Boston shall be dismissed. So, uh, it's not even applicable to the city of Lynn.
Right, and that's why I think it somehow was maybe at one point a direct quotes from law, but if I look at the, at the law now, these are not direct quotes from the law.
It looks like they probably copied it from, uh, maybe Boston Public Schools because it's, again, it's, I can see the city of Boston at least three or four times, um, in, in the, the quotation. So someone plagiarized, but yeah, I agree, it shouldn't be in there.
Great.
Okay, um, so moving right along, um, the administrative organization plan. This looks dated to me, um, and again, and I have not much to see left if you listen to me tonight. I would say that the organizational plan is not necessarily considered policy. Um, and there's a, there's a reference in here to nineteen eighty-eight, nineteen ninety-nine, or nineteen eighty-eight, eighty-nine school year. So I think it is a rather dated document.
My only issue with this, um, and Attorney Myhos can, can correct me, is I don't want any sort of, um, uh, elimination of, of certain positions if this is where they're, they're documented and us getting sort of, uh, grieved for, for that. Because it does list some positions that, um, you know, I worry about.
Could you, what are you referring to, Michael?
C C, it lists the, um, uh.
I, I see that, but which, which, which positions?
Well, uh, w- we all know that custodians, um, there's only certain cust- people, uh, custodians that are employed by the, the school, correct? And the rest are.
City side, right.
So, you know, I, I just, I, I, I'm, I'm afraid that we're going to eliminate a, a position and, um, we might ha- have, have, have an issue. That's, that's just my thought when, when we're.
I tend to agree with you and I think you should eliminate the whole section because bottom line is the existence of positions, if they do exist, depending upon collective bargaining in addition to budget. Because why not, it was in the budget to fund it. So I don't see this serving any purpose.
Okay, then I, I agree that we should, um, remove it then.
Okay.
Great.
Where's my arrow? So that was a long one, so let's get to the next one, which is, um, C C B, line and staff relations. That's my note here. Um, I would recommend the M A S C version of this policy. Here's the LIN version. So, and the policies actually contain a lot of the same information, but the one thing in the M A S C version that is not in the LIN version, is just the statement about, um, that when staff is working together, you know, that two-way flow of ideas and the ability to, um, work in a way that's, that's sensible, even if it doesn't always align exactly with the lines of authority. So the last paragraph is what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I think they're pretty similar, um, and can see the value of the M A S C, uh, addition there, but I'm, I don't have strong feelings if anybody else wants to weigh in.
We good?
Good.
Um, sorry.
Okay. Okay, so then we move to C D. Uh, I would recommend deleting this.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know how much more there is to say.
I I don't even think we have a deputy that's in charge of secondary education and one in charge of elementary education. Isn't it just split by the number, Dr. Todd Lyle?
Uh, not necessar- I mean, you don't have deputies of secondary or elementary by name. You just have deputies, um, but historically, there there has been that split. Uh, where, for example, when I was a deputy, I had all of the secondary, uh, schools and five elementary schools. Um, that split still exists.
So have, did you jump ahead to C D E there, when you're talking about the deputy superintendent in charge of?
Yes, sorry, I thought that was the same as the management team, okay.
Uh, no, so, um, and and again, I would say that, you know, job descriptions are generally not part of the policy manual. They reside someplace else, so I would suggest deleting this from the policy manual. Are you okay with that?
I I, yes, I'd, I'm okay with that, yep.
Okay, then for C E. Um, let me get to it.
Can I just?
Well, we know.
We're on, um, we're on policy C E, it looks like we're going to be, hang on one second. Probably on page thirty-one of forty-six, thirty-two of forty-six, sorry. Page thirty-two, um, administrative councils, cabinets, and committee. Everybody with me?
Yep.
Okay, so the two, um, the the M A S C and the Lynn policy basically matched. Um, other than a few minor wording. Um, I think we've already agreed that any he slash C would be, um, they, or whatever the appropriate pronoun is. Um, we have tended to change the word procedures to regulation, or, I'm not gonna, sure. We have tended to change regulations to procedures in our manual. Um, and always refer to a school district rather than a school system, other than that, the content of the policy is exactly the same.
Great.
M A S C.
Okay. Okay, so then, moving on to, um, C H. Which is policy implementation. Um, there's a couple items in the Lynn version that are not in the M A S C version. Um, which, um, involving the, um. The consequences of non-compliance with the policy and the suggestions for changes to the policy, so let me see if I can find really quick. So that, um, con- continuous disregard for school committee policy and administrative regulation may be interpreted as will. Will for neglect of duty and constitute grounds for dismissal, that's not in the M A S C version. Um, any employee who feels that he or she, or he or she, or we change it to they, they. Are subject to arbitrary and and by capricious regulations may institute a formal grievance procedure. That's in yours, not in ours, and I don't see anything wrong with leaving it in there if if you feel that that's appropriate to do it.
Another thing that I I saw, um. Uh, that's not in yours, that I think is important, but is is the sentence that says, in an attempt to ensure equitable and just treatment. Of all suggestions for changes and revisions of additions to existing policies are welcome from employees and students. I think that, again, that goes with the whole, uh, voice part of things, and I like that, um, the part about. Um, continued disregard for school committee policy, uh, is that. I'm not sure it needs to to be in ours, but I will, um, you know, stand back and hear from, uh, John and and Jared.
Uh, Mr. Ford, did you, did you have any comment on that?
I just, I, you know, again, I I yield to Attorney Sadoway, but I just didn't see any real need to. Take it out.
Yeah, I mean, I I would agree that we we can keep the Lynn one, if it's, if that one is, um, has those things that we don't have. Um.
I do have one more question about the Lynn one, I think it's fine to say to keep it. In the first sentence of the second paragraph. I think there's a a word that needs to change, cuz it says, in the educational hierarchy, those in subordinate positions are responsible for. Informing subordinates, I think it either should be superordinate positions, or. That first word should be superordinate or something else. You can't, you're catching what I'm saying?
Yeah, why can't we take what you have in your M A S C and put it in the Lynn, where it says administrators and supervisors are responsible for informing staff members in their schools, et cetera?
Yeah, I like that.
Okay. So take, take out the the first, your first sentence of the second paragraph and substitute it with. The, um, the the sentence in the M A S C version about administrators and supervisors.
Yes, that's what I I agree with.
Okay, perfect. Okay. That brings us to C H A. And again, these two policies were essentially the same, except for, um. You know, just some minor wording changes. So again, procedure for regulation, district for system, um, and parent slash parent guardian instead of parents.
Great.
Okay. Give me one second to catch up on my. So the next policy is, um, you've already looked at in section B. It can reside in both places, that's, um, perfectly fine. Um, my only thought would be that if you're essentially, eventually going to put this online, so that there's. It it's easier to do the the keyword search and so forth, that having it in both places might not be as necessary. So you might choose one place or the other, or leave it in both, whatever you, whatever you prefer.
Go ahead, Attorney Myhos.
Which one, which one were we talking about now?
Um, C H B, school committee review of regulations.
Yep. You say there's two of those?
Uh, that, it's coded, it has, it's coded as both C H B and B G D.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, Attorney Sadoway?
Um, I I think because it references, uh, the discipline, um, uh, code, it might. Fit better there, um, but I I guess when it's here, it's talking more so in a broad way. Uh, regarding regulations, but just because it's not in, uh, C doesn't mean it's not applicable to the. To the, to the regulations as a whole.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So I I don't think it needs to be repeated, to be honest.
I'm fine with that, I don't, I don't, I think either way is fine.
Okay. Okay. Um, regulation dissemination is the next one. You have one sentence in your policy that's not in ours, otherwise they're identical, and it's the last sentence. Members of the committee will also receive copies of all new or revised regulations that are issued for insertion in the manual. So if it's gonna be electronic, then you'll you'll automatically get it, you won't need to have it sent to you in paper form.
Is anybody having, yeah, Attorney Sadoway?
Um, it you use the word procedures as opposed to regulations?
Yep.
Um. I think that that is really what the superintendent, um, you know, we. We understand that we do the policies, he does the procedures, the regulations, I know it's, it, the words are pretty similar. Um, but I I would prefer to to use the the word procedures in 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 our policy.
Yep. So change to, um, yeah, I had that note, regulation versus procedure, um, so change it to procedure.
Yes, and, um, that's that's my suggestion, obviously, I have two others, uh, in the the policies of committee. Um, and I, you know, we we do have, um, some members that, uh, request things to be printed out for them. Because of, um, technology, so I would still wanna keep in there that, that, um, we can receive copies. For for members that may also have, uh, issues in the in the future, um, uh, just so they can have, um, the policies at hand. Uh, and, a- again, um. Any, you know, anyone could run, anyone can be elected, and I don't wanna, um, not have them have that ability.
Yeah, so do do you wanna change the will to may, because will would kind of requires that it happened?
I'll defer to Attorney Nicholson in in Ford, but I I agree, may sounds a little better.
Yeah, I'm happy with may.
Here, with me one second here. Okay. So on C H C A, approval of handbooks and directives. Once again, identical except for a couple words.
Great.
Okay. And then C H C E, um. Is really, I mean, it's really, um, again, an exhibit, not strictly a policy. Um, and delineate some of those requirements regarding discipline from the law that have to be in the handbooks, um, so. I think you're well covered without having it there. You know, all the, all the discussions that, um, we've been having about discipline code and everything else, I think you're well covered without having this exhibit in your manual.
Great, I think that makes sense.
Great.
Um, administration in policy absence. So the M A S C version is, um, shorter. And the Lynn version goes a little bit further in 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 what exactly decisions, um, are made by the superintendent. I have to say, when I read this and looked at number two and saw work stoppage epidemic. And other similar natural emergencies, I thought, wow, if every district had this policy, life might have been a whole lot easier last March. But, um, but whether or not to, you know, whether or not to keep the longer or shorter version is really up to you.
Any initial comments?
The longer version.
Yeah.
You wanna stay with the Lynn version, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, me too.
I, you know, I think it provides some clarity that is is helpful, actually.
Great.
You're welcome, Dr. Todd Lyle.
Uh, so on, oops. Catch up to, catch up to myself here. Um, administrative reports. Um, the M A S C version should really be sufficient here, um, because you have a lot of guidance from. Um, from the state and from the the superintendent's checklist that really cover. That's a lot of the things that are in the, um, Lynn version of of the policy.
Okay.
Agree. Mr. Daniel reports.
So the last policy in section C is C M. And again, just to, you know, just like one wording difference.
Great.
So we'll just make the word change and go on our way.
Awesome.
Okay. Feel better, Mr. Ford?
Great job.
Ready to move on to D for a bit?
Absolutely.
All right.
Everybody good with that? Okay, good.
Yep.
Okay, let me see if I can do this right. This may take me a second to stop my screen share and and start sharing sec- the D. So let me see if I can do this, okay? Just one second here. Can you just bear with me one second while I fill with my two, with my two monitors?
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you. Feel like I should sing or something while I'm doing this, and have some inter. Fill in the the gap of this gap of silence.
We're talking last meeting, if we should get the, um, Lynn public schools.
I was gonna say Garrett does. The whole music?
Yeah, exactly.
We're gonna have our our little American Idol star maybe sing a little interlude.
Be back to the meeting after that, though.
That will be hard.
Okay, I think we've got it, so you see D A, right?
Yep.
And you probably want it a little bit bigger. There we go, okay. Um, so, uh, on the, starting with D A, that the two versions of the policy, um, have sort of different approaches. Um, in terms of, you know, the fiscal, the fiscal management goals, uh, M A S C version is a little bit more philosophical. Um, and the Lynn version, like we saw sort of at the beginning of the other section. Um, the Lynn version a little bit more, um, specific in responsibilities. Um, if you. If you wanna adopt the Lynn version, then again. Um, there are some word changes I would think about. Um, for instance, in the fiscal responsibility of the school committee, and number three, I would say, ensure. Accurate keeping of records and accounts, because you're not actually the ones that are keeping the accurate records and accounts. So I don't know, I don't know which way you think you might wanna go on this one. Um, can I back up for one second, cuz I know, uh, Mr. McHugh is here. Um, and we did get to section D at probably the busiest time in his life during the course of the year. Um, so we, he has looked at all these documents, he has looked at my recommendations. Um, and we've exchanged some voicemails, um, so I, you know, I, he has said he's pretty much on board with my recommendations, but I don't want to. Just dive in, I'm sorry I did, um, dive into this without deferring a little bit to him as well.
That's okay, um, yeah, for the most part, I reviewed all the policies, I was kinda going along, if there was.
That's okay. Um, yeah, for the most part, I reviewed all the policies. I was kinda going along. If there was something that popped up, I think there were just a couple. That might need just some of the, the amounts of monies are different, and I could explain the approach versus M A C when we get to that. So either way. I would agree, we could stay with ours and fix it, uh, or we could go with the other one. Either way. I think the one we have is pretty clear right now. I would just probably. Uh, go along with Dorothy and say just change a few of those words to get it more current, you know, it's pretty explicit what we're doing.
Okay, great. Other, other thoughts? Yeah, Attorney Sataway?
Uh, 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 Mr. McHugh, you're saying we should keep our policy, but make some changes to it, not adopt the M A S C.
Yeah, I think this is fine. I think the other one's more like, it's just more general. This is kinda just talking. I think she used on number. Three, ensure accurate record keeping, you know, just like that was her suggestion. Because technically, she said, you guys don't keep the records. I do, you know what I mean? So. Your call.
Did you have something as well? Mr. Ford?
Well, I I thought we were gonna adopt the uh, M A S C version, but I.
Okay.
Whatever Mr. McHugh thinks.
I can go either way, whatever. The other one is just like she, uh, Mr. President said, it's just more general, that's all. Whatever, whatever. Either way is fine.
Let me just scroll to the other one so you can kind of see it at the moment here. It's really a little bit more high level as opposed to um, sort of. Direct tasks. It's more sort of the high level policy look.
Go ahead, Attorney Sataway.
Sorry, I I do prefer the M A S C over ours.
Yeah, I mean, if it, if this, if the point of this one is to state the goals, then this seems to be more focused on the goals, so.
Yeah, your line items in your budget are very specific, unlike other uh, school departments. School committees, so I mean. You basically, very few school committees, and I think uh, Kevin will go along with this. Been involved with a number of them. You have so many specific line items within the framework of the budget. If you want, might wanna keep it more specific, as it, as it presently is. More control of the budget to the school.
Attorney Myhos, you know, there are certain things in in the M A S C that that I liked. Um, you know, to establish level of funding that will provide high quality education for students. I I like the the approach with regards to equity and and the words that they're saying. Um, and and that's how we really controlled the budget. We, we, you know, the superintendent. Knows where, and 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 Mr. McHugh. Knows where we want our focus to be, and then that's obviously where they put the money. Um, so, so that's why I like the broadness in in those things. Um. But if you're saying that we should keep it the same and 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 have it. Pretty specific where it actually mentions insurance. And um, bid and procedures and. Fiscal records, it it's it's really. It it's, it's, it's really is um, very, very specific to certain things.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't think adopting the M A S C policy takes away. Any of your ability to have that specificity in your line items, or any spec, or any control over spending. Um, it's really more about the goals of of the fiscal management.
And that's why it's called fiscal goals.
All right, uh, Mr. Ford, did you, did you have a preference there? You're on mute.
Hello? Uh, the M S A version, that was my.
Yeah. Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. President.
Oh, I was just gonna say, so, okay for the M A S C version then.
Yeah, I think so. Attorney Myhos, are you satisfied with that?
Yep, yes, no question.
Good.
So then D B, um, again, sort of two approaches. Um, the M A S, the Lynn version. Is, I think they're both actually pretty simple and straightforward in their, in what they talk about. It's, I I think this is really, again, this is more sort of philosophical approaches. I did feel like some of the um. I'm sorry, I'm trying to scroll and talk at the same time here. Some of the um, legal references in the Lynn version. Didn't really seem like they were relevant to the policy. Yeah, fifteen one G was one of them, yes. Um, it relates to the um. Advisory committees to the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. Um, seventy one thirty eight N is relevant, that's about the public hearing on the budget. Um, and then seventy one fifty nine is about the ability to hire the superintendent.
Attorney, uh, Nicholson?
Yeah, Attorney Sataway.
Um, and and i- it does set a deadline on the annual budget uh, by April, um, where it uses the word shall. And um, it doesn't take anything in consideration that may um, have impact like COVID, obviously. Um. So I I I don't like um, using the word. Shall, obviously, I'd like to to keep it uniformed and and to get it obviously with a much. Uh, in in timeframe much before the next, the following school year. Um, but, but. I I think that wording is is, now that we've lived through COVID is. Uh, is an issue. Um. And can't the um, school committee? Each time set a a a a deadline on when the annual budget. Is due, if if we don't have that in there, Dorothy?
Um, yes, I mean, unless you have something in your city charter that requires it to be someplace by a certain date.
Attorney Myhos?
You're on mute.
There's, there's nothing in the charter that requires that.
Okay.
So that's within the framework of the discretion of the school.
Do you, do you think we should keep?
I'm sorry.
You think we should keep it the way it is?
Yeah. I I would think so.
Just the first uh, first sentence of the the Lynn version. By April first. Of each year, the superintendent of school shall have formulated the preliminary budget of the following year.
Well, that language is u- utilized in a lot of uh. Not only statutory, but regulatory requirements. It's never really followed, because it's dependent upon the, uh, what the uh. The budget's gonna be. Put forward by the legislature.
Yeah.
The governor, and also what the allocation is gonna be from the mayor. So I think maybe the softer version nutshell. But will be maybe. Something effective within the framework that it's not mandatory. Cause it's never gonna be met, realistically, because the, you don't know what the money's gonna be until later on in the year.
Well, this does say preliminary budget.
It's fine. Question semantics, I mean, whatever you wanna do.
Yeah. Just a quick question, Attorney Nicholson?
Yes, please.
Um, uh, uh, Mr. Mc, uh, Mr. McHugh. But is, I I feel as though you you have a a preliminary budget well before April, at least based off of what you're hearing. Cause sometimes we even kinda get a bill around, you know, January, February, right?
Well, it 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 varies, because I've been doing this for a number of years, and in the city, you know, where we rely on. Uh, you know, it seems like cities rely typically on the last minute information. I mean. You know, the governor comes out with his budget, so that starts, and then, you know, we go through the House and Senate. And until the final, I mean, over the number of years, we've always tried to come out in April with a budget, but there have been. Uh, I mean, if Donna Capola says, she would remember, there have been a few years uh, back there that. Actually, didn't bring, we didn't bring the budget forward until like late June or into July and approve it in August. So I mean, I think it's like the semantics, the word shall is probably, you know, uh. You know, it is absolute as far as I'm concerned, but uh, I I know we have not always followed that, so. Uh, but we have an idea, uh, but until I have a real good sense of where we're going with it, I mean, I. I I build a budget out based on all the current people and start with a baseline budget. Now, you could call that. The preliminary budget, because we know by not adding anything, what it's gonna look like. We don't really just present you that, cause that definitely, then we'd have to give you a whole number of book and everything else. So I mean, i- it's. You know, the practice has always been waiting until we get an official number, then once we get the number, we present that to you guys within that number. Then it gets, you know, goes through the process from there. I don't think that quite helps, Mike, but I I think that.
It does.
Could I, could I just, uh, be- before we, so it sounds like we wanna resolve this issue if we go with the Lynn version. Are people, is that, is that the desire? Is to 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 go with the Lynn version? I s- I just wanna check on that before we.
Not with me.
Okay.
Um, I I feel as though, based off of the change you made on the previous policy, the M A S C policy. Uh, fits better into to the language that we we just approved. And it also fits better in into the um. Uh, statements that Attorney Myhos and and Mr. McHugh made with regards to. Um, the public school budget being regulated and controlled by the legislation, state regulations, and and the. The local school committee requirements. So I think that the annual budget. Uh, paperwork from the M A S C actually fits better into what actually happens. And um, it 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 doesn't have a set deadline, but we we. We we could definitely add that to the annual budget if need be, that. Um, the school committee and the the superintendent will work, you know, in their best effort to have a preliminary uh, uh, budget. Um, uh, within the first week of April.
So can I just, can I just say, we might wanna hold off on that question, on this policy, because the next policy is budget deadlines and schedules?
Oh.
Um, so, so am I gonna hold off on that part of the discussion? Um, the one thing that I think might resonate with you guys in the um, M A S C version. Is tying the budget to the goals and objectives of the school system.
That's what I liked, yeah. That's why I thought it fit better with what what we just changed on the previous policy.
Okay.
M A S C.
Great.
Okay, budget deadlines and schedules. Uh, and in this one, actually, I think that because um. The M A S C version was kind of written with a town in mind as opposed to a city. So on this one, I think probably the Lynn version is gonna be the more appropriate version for you. Um, it does, you know, call, it does call out the requirement for a public hearing. Um, and it's um. You know, talks about the budget being done in stages with attention to, with attention to deadlines established by law. So I think that kinda covers a little bit of the discussion you were just having.
What does the third sentence starting with established by law mean?
You know, I, I'm not sure I have a good answer to that. I I mean, to me, sometimes that's in there. May, and may have been in there prior to um. Prior to us putting in the legal references. Does that make sense? But it is established by law that you must have a public hearing on the budget.
Yeah, so. Maybe, um.
Couldn't that be up in the second paragraph?
A- after budget, as opposed to it just being separate without a period?
Yeah, yeah. So, just like, uh, on the proposed budget as established by law.
Right.
Okay. Great, everybody go with that? Awesome.
Okay, so we're taking Lynn for that one. And then budget planning. And again, I think that the Lynn version, um. This may be one where where uh, Mr. McHugh wants to le, to weigh in, but I think the Lynn version is probably the better version here. Um, more, more appropriate for your circumstances. As opposed to the more general circumstances that the M A S C version was written under.
And it talks about goals and objectives, which is what we were, we're heading, we were heading for in the previous one.
Yeah.
So I I like it. I'd agree.
Okay. So um, D B D, let me scroll down to it, D B D dash E. This is verbatim the law. I don't know why you would keep it in your manual. There's been other times when, we, you know, we've hit, this is just the law, and you've decided to take it out. So.
Yeah, it sounds right to me. Anybody else?
Well, I kinda think about what Michael was pointing, like, just historically, what, why, like, why was it there? Why would we? Why was it there originally for?
Uh, you know, there are, there are quite a number of instances we've run across going through the manual where there is a dash E, which is an exhibit. Um, which is verbatim a section of the law. Um, and it just seems, I I don't know if. Maybe someone who has a long history in Lynn knows that, at some point, it seemed like it was appropriate to um. To insert that to sort of back up the rationale for the policy, that's.
Attorney Myhos, could you provide any?
Even, Brian, even I don't go back that far.
Nineteen thirty nine, come on.
The bottom line, I would feel it has something, something to do with uh, two and a half. So that they're referring to the authority of the school committee to. For foreign appropriations, we voted on by the legislative body, being the city council. That's what it appears to be to me. But it's no longer, there's no valid reason for it anymore, with meaning it's not, et cetera, so.
Well, and I think, I I I, and I don't know if when these were inserted, there was not the legal references in the policy. You know, as part of the policy, or if it was just the policy stood alone.
And, and Brian, these, these uh, general laws are so readily available. That I don't think that we need to take up any more space uh, in our policies to have them, and the fact that they can change. Um, would mean that we would have to be on top of these things, so. Uh, we didn't have outdated uh, references, um, like we have in a few of the documents we currently use.
So, take it out?
Yep.
So in the budget adoption procedures, um, I would again say that if, if the adoption procedures. Um, are current practice in Lynn, then I would keep what the Lynn version is.
And that is our correct pa, uh, that's correct, cause that refers to the charter, to the city charter, exactly.
Great, so, we'll keep that.
Do we publish in the local newspaper, uh, Mr. McHugh?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, we have to do that, yeah.
That's per the charter, that the, actually says it right in the charter.
Okay, perfect, yeah.
Great.
So I think um. We need to look at the next two together, because. There's a co, a policy coded D B I budget implementation that Lynn has that M A S C doesn't. And there's um. One second, let me catch up with myself here. Um, and then there's D B J Budget Transfer Authority, um, which is. Looks like the M A S C version of the Lynn budget implementation, if I said that clearly. Um. So, the D B I really looks at um. Giving that, you know, the the day-to-day implementation to the. Giving that, you know, the, the day-to-day implementation to the school district. Um, but that, the line item transfer occurs, um. You know, is, needs to be approved by the school committee. Um, so, and, and D B J really covers the same thing. So I don't know, and this may be one that, um, Mr. McHugh wants to weigh in on too, which one seems more clear and reflective of practice.
I think the, uh, Lynn one is more accurate, um, you know. I think the only thing I would say is on the second paragraph, and then next to the last sentence. I, I just think that should say. May not be co-mingled in move between salary, and that should say non-salary, cause that's a salary and salary.
Yeah.
And that should say non-salary, cause I mean, this is something I've been doing for a number of years in other districts as well. And that's, my understanding is that the kind of, was always the law, you can't go between salary and non-salary, two separate, uh, items. So I don't know why. Salary.
Right.
Why is it saying without school approval, should it be?
Yeah, I was, should it be school committee approval there?
Yes.
Okay.
And that, and that, and I've done that only a few times, I had to do that, but like, when we did the transfer last year, to remember from the salary money. To go to buy the, uh, technology equipment, I came to the school committee for that vote.
So then, in the, and then, and the next sentence, funds cannot be transferred without school committee approval between appropriation funds. Seems like there's a word or something missing there too.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure what that's referring to, cause it says regular ed, I mean, I'm not. Yeah, I know what they're talking about there.
And I'm, so I'm still confused by the previous sentence, why, why this funds may not be co-mingled in, comma, move between. Salary and non-salary, well, school committee. I, I don't think that sentence is proper.
No, I, I, I think what they're trying to say is, um, when you set a salary budget, there's a certain amount. And then there's a non-salary, a certain amount.
Yeah.
We don't, you don't, in other districts, when I, when I served at my school committee a number of years ago. We would always take, we do a little bit different here, but in that district, we would take a vote on the salary amount every year. And then, then a vote on the non-salary amount, and then this vote on the total amount, we take three votes. We don't do that, and we just take one vote on the overall budget at the end. You know what I mean, I don't know if that's what Mike, I'm not sure if that's what it's trying to say there, I mean, this policy's been around forever, you know what I mean, but, uh.
Does this sound better to you, Kevin, um, Attorney Myhose? Funds may not be co-mingled in or moved between salary and non-salary.
I think it's. I think it should probably be co-mingled with or moved.
Okay, that, that, that sounds more so correct, um, th- th- does that, uh. Kinda, uh, go what we're, we're all trying to say, um, Mr. McHugh and Attorney Myhose?
It does.
Yeah, I would agree.
Funds may, may not be, uh, co-mingled with or moved between salary and non-salary, um. Wha- what do we say after that, uh, Kevin? Salary and non-salary line items, does that sound specific enough? Or, or categories?
Um, well, it's, I don't know, it. But I don't know if, that's kinda, you know, it's a tough one, because within that, there's categories within, the whole thing is broken down.
So you think salary and non-salary is broad enough?
I, I think, I, I, that's why I've always treated it, so to me, it's been pretty clear what I can and can't do, you know what I mean?
Okay.
And I, and I wouldn't, again, as long as it says without approval of the school committee, I think it's a very important thing, or vote of the approval or vote of the school committee.
Okay, so, did you get that, Dorothy?
Yep, I did, I did. So what I have is funds may not be, what I have is funds may not be co-mingled with. Not co-mingled with, or moved between salary and non-salary without school committee approval.
And if we. Correct.
Do you lose anything, but do you, do you lose anything by just deleting that last sentence?
Well, which, what last sentence?
Uh, funds cannot be transferred without school committee approval between appropriation funds, regular ed.
Give her a regular ed and just leave the rest of it.
Isn't that saying the same thing, though?
Yep, just. Yeah, I, but it reaffirms it.
Yeah, I mean, maybe transfers, uh, is different than co-mingle, uh.
Yeah, that's what I see, Jared.
Okay.
Uh, funds cannot be transferred, uh, without school committee approval, period.
No, but what about?
Uh, uh, sorry, uh, uh, Kevin, you think that that, that kinda restricts you with regards to transferring any sort of funds?
I would say yes, I mean, we've always allowed, like, within lines, and you know, you know, one line's short, twenty dollars or something, I need to move twenty dollars. Cause I moved twenty dollars, but that sentence would say, I would have to bring that to you, I believe, because it's very explicit.
Well, transferred is such a broad, you know, say you were gonna transfer funds, uh, to pay the, the warrant. You have to go to us to get permission, I know that one of us signed off on it, but i- i- it just seems like the word transferred is, is, is really broad at that point. But, um. Wha- what, what I think it's, it's, it's trying to say here, and, and maybe you guys can correct me if, if I'm wrong. Is that w- we need to fund the regular education, and we shouldn't be taking any money away from that. Without school committee approval. So whatever the.
Yeah, I guess I'm not, the only question I would ask, where will we, um, where will be transferring it to, that's the next question.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think regular education is, is, we're able to decipher what that's doing in that sentence.
Right, yeah, a- 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 and maybe if it was for special education, I can understand, because, you know, it's heavily regulated. Um, so, I, 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 I'm very confused by that last sentence, maybe we should definitely take it out.
That's why I didn't, I couldn't, I can't place it anywhere, cause I mean, specialized is still within your regular appropriation budget, so you know what I mean, it's still the funding school, so. I don't know why they're saying that, you know?
What, what if instead of, what, I mean, uh. Instead of saying that, that you would need a vote for every specific transfer, that we would get a, um. A summary of all the transfers or something like that to approve or ratify?
Well, again, that, that, that's just gonna mean, I can't do a transfer till I come to a school meeting and do a vote, and you don't know if I needed to do it.
Well, no, no, cause you could ratify it, so it could be, it would happen after the fact, but.
But we shouldn't constrict him to have to move every, to come to the committee with every transfer of funds. It's just too much of a day-to-day activity.
So generally, when we talk to school committees about their budget responsibilities, we talk about, you know, big buckets. Like you have salary and non-salary, and if there's gonna be movement between those big buckets. You should, you know, you have the authority to, you should approve those transfers, but you're absolutely right. Nobody should have to come to you to say, we're spending twenty dollars more on pay, you know, on pens instead of pencils or something like that. You've got to allow them the flexibility to run the district without having to come back for approval of all kinds of small transfers. Part of, part of the issue here is that the, the state says that school committee, the, the law says that school committee approve budget trans- must approve budget transfers. Between line items, but they never define in the law what a line item is. So you get to define the line item, and if you define you have two line items and it's salary and non-salary, then you're good.
Look, look at the sentence before the one we just changed, where it says funds may be transferred within appropriation funds between lines. Does that?
Right, you're sorry. Yep.
Right.
Yeah, within appropriation funds, so what are we saying appropriated funds are?
But I, I feel like.
So you, you approve a budget at the beginning of the year, which says you're going to spend so much on facilities and so much on salary and so much on. Um, and so much on. Materials, right, and, uh, to me, what this saying is that there, within those appropriations. The transfers can be made within those appropriations, if you're going to go outside those appropriations, then the school committee should approve the transfer.
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense, but what are we saying the appropriation funds are? The, 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 the different.
Gotcha.
You know, we have, we get the budget and it's broken down sort of by, um. Facilities and technology and, uh, uh, secondary versus, you know, like, what, at what level are we saying appropriation funds are?
Well, I've always looked at salary and non-salary, it's the two, you know, kind of appropriation amounts and within those lines, but, uh. You know, I mean, I, the question is, I think what she's asking, if, you know, that's what we've always utilized. But if, if you're looking to go deeper than that, you know, then that's, yeah, the next issue.
The way I read this policy. The two, that two appropriated funds would be salary and non-salary, if, if Mr. McHugh was saying you take three votes, you take a salary vote. A non-salary vote and an overall vote, to me, those, then the, those are the appropriations.
We don't, we don't do that, just to be clear, that was, that was a different district that does that.
Right.
Oh, okay.
One vote, they take one, they take one vote.
One vote, yeah.
Total, so the total appropriation is the total appropriation.
Okay.
But I'm, what I'm saying, I, I would never transfer funds from salary to non-salary or non-salary to the salary. Without the school committee approval, and that's the way I've, since I've been trained doing this, that's the way I've always done it.
I wonder if the word appropriation should be appropriated.
What, what if, what do, um, other districts typically use as the categories that?
Uh, they tend to use. Do you wanna weigh in, Mr. McHugh, on that one?
Well, I worked in, uh, two other districts and we used, we used the, the same methodology, salary and non-salary. That's how I did it, in Wilmington, that's how I did it in P U D, and I was on the, uh, Lowell School Committee, and Lowell did it the same way.
It's, I mean, it's from, from the discussion, it sounds to me like you could eliminate that last sentence. And what you're doing now, the practice, and the policy defines what you're doing now as practice.
Right, and is that, is that consistent, you think, with what other districts are doing as using salary, non-salary as the, as?
Well, you know, this is one of those, if you know what one district does, you know what one district does. I think for, it's, it's almost, to me, it's almost like the larger the district, the simpler the buckets. If that makes any sense. I mean, you're, you get, I'm, I'm sure you get regular reporting, so you know the status of the budget, um, so, in some ways.
Yeah, we get updates, uh, can, can I, can I, can we change the sentence, um, where it says, so funds may be transferred within a, a appropriated funds. Um, between lines within those appropriated funds, just to clarify that. Um, and, uh, I think the second, uh, the last sentence at that point, um, should be removed. And the new last sentence, uh, should be fine with, uh, what we made for changes. Cause I, I, wha- what, you know, what, what I believe and what, what I thought Kevin said, um, was, there's the salary. And non-salary, um, if there's, uh, and then we break it down to different departments in schools, okay? So if we're taking stuff from the bookstore at, uh, Lynn Woods. That, you know, there's been no school, so there's no cost for that, but we need to put it towards something else that's non-salary. He's gonna be able to do it, um, so long as it's within, um, the, the Lynn Woods, uh, uh, budget. Uh, based off of that, the wording, I just, I just added, uh, to, to better understand between lines.
What I, what I don't understand about that, I'll try to say, is why, why would it have to be within the Lynn Woods budget, it would just be any non-salary expense you could do for?
Correct. So, well, I, I guess it could work that way.
That, that's what we're talking.
That's how it's actually worked. Okay, so, does, so you, you don't believe that add in between lines, uh, w- within those? Funds may be transferred between lines, uh, of appropriated funds, does that make? Uh, it just doesn't make sense to me, the sentence.
Yeah, no, so we, I think we can, I think we can work on that, but I think that the question is, wh- wh- what are, how are we defining what appropriated funds mean? And Mr. McHugh, um, has, has explained that, uh, under current practice, there's just two buckets. So any, any non, i- if, if, if there's a change in, um, non-salary, then it can be used for any other non-salary expense. But not, regardless of school or department or anything like that, as long as it's not salary. And, and, so, so that's, and we could, the, the categories could get, obviously be narrow than that, it could be particular school or particular department or whatever. Or, um, so it, it, it's, I don't think it's enough, if we're gonna be clarifying it, just to say that it can't be, it, it can be transferred between lines. We have to define what appropriated funds are. I mean, I, 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 it, it seems like it's, that's working fine to do. We certainly don't wanna hamstring ourselves, um, i- i- to, uh, uh, require approval. Um. So.
So, so, um, Attorney Nicholson, if, if it said funds may be transferred within salary. And within non-salary. So if, if it was, it sort of was the, let me, I had it, then I lost it, funds may be transferred within. The salary line items or within salary funding, however you wanna put the, the, uh. Descriptive there, so funds may be transferred between salary and non-salary. Without, without school committee approval, funds may not be co-mingled or moved between salary and not salary without school committee approval.
Right, that would accomplish it, I mean, I, I, we can figure out exactly how, what the wording is, and I, I, I just wanted everybody to be aligned on. How we're defining the, the bucket. Right, like the, what the category, but at what level do you require a vote?
So, Mr. McHugh, the practice now is that you would ask for a vote only if you were transferring between salary and non-salary?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's what, that's what we want the policy to say.
Right.
Right.
And so the wording that you came up with, uh, on the previous sentence, to make it make sense, sounds like it does it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that, that sounds good.
Okay.
Um, I do have a question about the last sentence, um, should additional revenue materialize, plan for. Said funds should be incorporated into the current budget, um, which is a pass- passive voice, who, who is incorporating it into the current budget?
Technically, that would be this, the superintendent would be, you know, the ultimate person that would, you know, do that, I guess. I would work with the superintendent if we go to a special grant, you know, I would always meet with the superintendent on that, if we got something mid-year. But typically, you know, you'd be informed if we got the grant, what we're spending on, but not the, you know, the, all the breakout of the lines. I don't know if that answers it, Jared.
Yeah, no, that, that, that's, I, I think that does answer, I mean, but are totally, are totally required, aren't we required to vote to accept the grant anyway?
Uh, I'm not sure we have to, I'm not sure if we voted on it, uh, typically, we get and we fund, uh, I think the, the superintendent applies for it. And we're awarded the grant, so honestly, I think a, a vote of the school committee, I'm not sure we've actually done that. We don't do that on federal grants every year that we get those.
Right, John?
We don't do that, but, you're correct, but the school committee has the authority over the grants. You have the, the authority and when the request is gonna be submitted, for when it's issued, if the school committee wants to assert authority. But it, within, within the past. Um, time, within the past twenty years. It's always been, the school committee's given the authority of the superintendent to go forward. It's, 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 it's the money well up to the federal and other grants. Independently of vote of the school committee, but the bottom line is, the school committee has that authority, if it wishes to enforce it.
Mm-hmm, so, I mean, there may be some grants that come with strings. That the school committee would want to know about before saying that we wanna go for this grant. Um, for instance, a number of years ago, there was a grant about funding additional. Um, for instance, a number of years ago, there was a grant about funding additional AP classes. Which required that after the grant ended, the school committee was obligated to continue to fund AP classes for a certain number of years afterwards out of their own budget. So you might have wanted to determine whether or not you really wanted to have that grant or not.
Happens with the police and fire um grants as well, where they'll grant like four positions, but you have to maintain them for a certain period of time. Um, yeah, I I think that that's something that we need to keep in in mind, Attorney Nicholson, um. And it doesn't explicitly state who's in charge of that in that last paragraph is what you're saying, correct? So additional revenue materialized during a budget year, which was not comma anticipated. Um, at the start of the year, um, the school year, um, perhaps.
At the start of the fiscal year?
Fiscal year, that sounds better.
At the start of the budget year, I mean.
Attorney Saturday.
Yeah.
By law, the school committee has the authority over, why would you wanna recently? Uh, reiterate those, make. For the statement, hold it to the authority of the school committee. School committee has the authority over any budgetary item. Right.
So Jerry Miles, you're suggesting we just delete that last sentence, the third paragraph?
I would think so, yes.
Mister McHugh, did you have a a thought on that?
No, that would be fine, I mean, I I know in over the years, we've gotten anything like this that's come up, I mean, that the superintendent has brought it. Forward to the school committee, but we just never voted on it, that's all, you know, I'm not sure if the. Vote's required, that'd be good, something to know, we could start doing that, it's going forward.
Okay, that you thought why, what how's that sound?
Uh, how does which part sound, sound, I mean.
Any any of this, any any, you're not gonna weigh in on any of it, but I.
I I don't have a strong feeling, I mean, you know, typically, I handle communication around. Uh, grants that we received in uh the superintendent's reports, but I'm fine to. You know, put it under new business and uh have the school committee vote on it, I will tell you, we are extremely. Judicious around grants that have strings attached, you know, usually there's the ones that we go after, ones that. Uh, are designed to serve a specific purpose. We reap the benefit of that and then everybody goes on their their separate way.
Partnering up with other districts, you think that's something that you should come to us, cause I know we did with Salem on on one grant.
Yep, but that that, so, so that's a good example, that's a, that was part of a DESI grant. Where they encouraged uh districts to collaborate if they were interested in doing the same thing. Uh, but yeah, I mean, you know, in 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 my short tenure here. Uh, six years, I've not seen uh a proposal come forth to the school committee around applying for a grant, but if. That's what you're asking for, it's it's, you know, it's not a problem to do.
And does anybody else have any, might call these other members have thoughts on this one?
Can we ask Brian since he's in uh the chairperson of the grants subcommittee?
Please, yeah, Mister Cassianas.
Well, I I was just gonna add, um. Some of those cr- those grants that we're talking about, the ones with the. The the sustainable plans that require us to have the extra. Skin in the game, those are very, those are very important grants, um, as we're talking about this, I'm just thinking about. Some organizations that, you know, when we talk about eligibility, we lose eligibility on that that specific. When we do search for grants, and I guess we get the low-hanging fruit ones, but the bigger ones, the ones that really. As we're talking now, I'm thinking about in terms of just language.
What about the timeframes, uh, Brian, like, what, you know, when we have a summer off, what if they have a grant that has a deadline before we meet again? Like, stuff like that, is what I worry about as well.
Well, that that, when you do the SWOT analysis, when when our folks who do the grants, however, we find out how these. Using the foundations, you guys already, we, the district has identified the grants, they've identified eligibility. It's like chess, it's like the third move ahead, and maybe there might be one down the road. Uh, but but we might not know, if we go past the budget. We have to wait, you have to be, we'll ha- we'll we'll miss out, we won't know, so we lose the the window of opportunity.
Yeah, no, that's a good point, I mean, I the 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 third paragraph here, it doesn't say that, it doesn't specify anybody, so I don't know that that deleting it. Necessarily change the current practice, because it's not like it's the saying, anybody does it specifically in the first place, um.
Well, well, I think the language, perhaps from a special grant, like it's, that's not really the. The language, like it's, there's, there's different types of grants and there's just.
So but so you would, but so but you would wanna take that out then, that last sentence?
Yeah.
Yeah. And Mister Ford, do you agree?
Yes.
Yeah.
So take out the last sentence? Yeah, yeah, last, last sentence, last paragraph, okay. And we don't have to deal with the misplaced comma either. Okay.
Well, I I unless the next one is really quick, I think we're headed to the end of the.
Um, actually, the next one might be really quick.
All right, great.
Wanna go for it? We just have to get to it. Um, the only difference between the M A S C version and the Lynn version here was the um. The additional um legal references in the M A S C version.
Strike them. Well, which one are we talking about now?
Uh, we're talking about funding proposals and applications, but uh D E D.
Okay, thank you. Great difference.
So I mean, the only, the, you know, what I have on the screen, the only difference is what's highlighted in yellow, so we could just add those two legal references and you'd be all set. Jared, you're muted.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, uh, great, that sounds good, any anybody else have thoughts on that or anything else?
Oh, I have the one, easy one.
All right, thank you so much, Miss Presser.
Hi, sorry, I'm so sorry to bother you guys, are you hanging up right now, because I've been sitting here for two hours and I really just need to ask one question. Um, I can't take my camera off because it's been blocked. But I've been sitting here because I know that you're meeting, I can't seem to get ahold of anybody, and I know you're meeting on March eleventh to discuss schools reopening. And I'm wondering if I can just ask a few questions.
So this is, this is a um subcommittee meeting, and so we will, we can. Take down your information and maybe follow up after if you have particular questions, um.
Uh, if somebody would call me back, I've had state senators call me back and representatives and everything, but nobody from Lynn. Has called me back, but yes, I would definitely talk to somebody other than on this Zoom meeting.
Uh, so, uh, if I may, Jared.
Please.
Uh, I may, it just says Andrea's uh phone, I don't know if you've called me directly. Um, but I can, I'll give you my email address if you email me tonight, I I call you right now.
Okay, awesome, thank you so much.
Uh, it's Totweiler, Totweiler, it's actually my last name, as you can see on the Zoom.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and then the uh letter P. At Lynn schools dot org.
All right, thank you so much, sorry about that.
Oh, no, thank you.
All right, guys, great work.
Thank you. So I would, what I would like to do quickly is uh come up with the the next meeting. Date, if people are okay to do that. We have been meeting uh roughly once a month, although we we ended up skipping February, if people wanted to do. The end of March or, um, I don't know, we 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 wanna give uh Miss Presser enough time to do the next. Uh, sections, so.
Yeah.
And we also have to keep Charlie, Attorney Gallow in mind as well, with regards to his request.
Yep, yep. Exactly.
So the next, I mean, we're we're making good progress through section D, we can easily finish that up next time. Um, the next section is E, um, and I, I'll, um. Ms. Jules and Doctor Totweiler, I may need their help in contacting, E covers. It's not like D, which everything was Mister McHugh. E has a lot of different players, so if I could get their help in sort of being able to contact some of the different players to run. The dip, the policies by them that relate to their work. Um, and um, if I could, if we could be looking at maybe the first full week in April, so I could have time to do all that, I would really appreciate it.
Okay. Um, so we have a meeting. The eighth, so we couldn't do that Thursday. We could do. Uh. The fifteenth, maybe, if people get their taxes done beforehand.
Oh, no, that's a bad day.
Got it. We're talking about April fifteenth.
No.
Um.
Did we wanna stick with Wednesday night?
Yeah, sure, so maybe Wednesday.
That'd be the fourteenth?
Fourteenth. Does that work for people?
I'm checking my calendar.
Okay.
That would work for me.
Yeah, it worked for me too.
Could we be earlier, six?
Yeah, what about a week earlier than that?
Yeah, the seventh would work for me as well.
The seventh is fine with me as well. Turn sideways.
I gotta look at the calendar, give me one second.
Hey, can we be at an earlier time, like six?
I gotta, I gotta do seven, unfortunately.
Seven?
Yeah.
And the seventh is fine. Seven at seven?
Does that, does that work for you, Brad, do you wanna do a different date?
No, not that one's great.
That's good.
Yep.
All right.
Looks good.
All right, so April seventh at seven P M, we will can return to D.
You you do realize there's a school committee meeting the next night, I just wanna be clear.
No.
Okay.
Well, we wanna try to have a meeting every day that week, just to have you.
Listen, I I I'm out every night anyway, man, it's it's nothing. I'm just making sure you know.
Yes, we got, we've, we got a a solid tolerance here, Dr. Todd.
Okay, I'm, Jared and I went with the young kids, I I have my wife texting me, Marcus woke up five times so far.
Very sad, I have a dog son named Charlie, right here, he hears you, like.
All right. I would like to take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
No, you're not a member, you can't do it, motion to adjourn.
All right, adjourned. Thank you, Miss Presser and everyone else for your for your input, well, I'll see everybody soon.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, good night.
Hey, good night.
Good for coming, yeah.
Thank you.